No, we're not recording yet. Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is February 22, 2023. It is just about 1:00 P. M. This is the second part of a hearing that commenced on February 15, 2023. It concerns the application by Vassar Health Connecticut, Inc., DBA Sharon Hospital, docket number 22-32504-COM. Sharon Hospital is seeking certificate of need approval for the termination of inpatient services offered by hospital pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 198-638, sub A, sub 5. Specifically, Sharon Hospital is seeking approval to consolidate its critical care services by terminating its intensive care unit and establishing a progressive care unit. Thank you all for making the time to come back for the second date. As I stated previously, my name is Dan Chuka. I have been designated to serve as the hearing officer for this matter. I ask that all members of the public mute their devices and silence any additional devices that are around them. Again, the C O N process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the public, our staff, and to the intervenor. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present. Before we get into the substance of the hearing, I did just want to call attention to the fact that the OHS member who was present last time, Myla Capozzi, to assist with the administration of the hearing is out today due to illness. She has been replaced today by Leslie Greer, who has assisted with the these C O N hearings in the past. The agenda for this proceeding is posted as Exhibit G G in the docket. Last time we were together, we handled all of public comment and most of the technical portion of the hearing. What remains of the following? Number one, OHS staff's questioning of applicant and intervenor. Number two, discussion of late files. And number three, closing arguments. I plan to tackle them each in that order. But before we get into that, I did want to ask if there were any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to need to address before we do that. So I'm going to start first with Attorney Tucci. Is there anything else you would like to discuss before we get into things? Attorney. I think he Attorney Tucci, are you speaking? He might be muted. It looks like you're unmuted now. Yes.
Can you hear me? We apologies. I I thought I was unmuted. And I am now. So, no, we have no, no additional housekeeping or administrative matters. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. And Attorney Knack, do you have anything you'd like to address?
No, we had two people we thought had signed up, but they didn't contact us again. So we we have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, thank you. So Attorney Tucci, are all of your witnesses present from the last date?
Yes, Mr. Chuka, and we're ready to proceed.
Great. And counsel for the intervenor, Dr. Kurish, are your witnesses available?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so since this is a continuation of the prior date, I would just like to remind all witnesses that they are still under oath, and they are obligated to provide the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this proceeding. And I also wanted to mention that if we do need to take any breaks for any reason, everybody should turn off their camera and mute their devices because we may still be able to hear you, even though the recording will be stopped. With that, we're going to proceed with the questions that the OHS analysts have prepared for the applicant and the intervenor. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve Ormond and Annie.
Mr. Chuka, just give us a moment. We'll have our witnesses come up so that they're all available.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Chuka. I think we're going to start with Ormond starting asking the questions.
Let's just give them a moment to get settled. All right, I think we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My first, the first question that we have is in reference, so page 42 of the main application. And are you able to give us an idea of what utilization has looked like since filing the application in early 2022? And are you able to provide updated utilization volume for for April 2022 to the present?
Mr. Clark, this is Ted Tucci. I apologize. We're having a little bit of audio difficulty. I hate to ask you to do this, but could you repeat your question one more time?
Are you able to give us an idea of what utilization has looked like since filing the application in early 2022? Are you able to provide updated utilization volume for April 2022 to present?
Multi-utilization has been since April is the question.
And Mr. Clark referenced page, it was Bates number S H forty-two.
Yeah, so um, we, what we understand you're asking is that what has the utilization of the current ICU been since our application, which ended, the data we provided was through September? Is that is that correct? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, since the submission of the application.
Submission, okay. So I don't know the exact number, the the volumes. I can tell you that the utilization is likely similar to what we we presented, just anecdotally speaking, based on what we see in the unit each day. But I don't have volume numbers today to to share.
And would you be, would you be able to provide those for us after the the hearing as a late file?
Yeah, we can get that information. Yes.
We will request that.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. And what is the ICU's average daily census and discharge volumes from 2018 to present? And per week, in terms of per week, per month, per year? And again, that might be submitted, maybe submitted as a late file.
Okay.
And attorney to page pages forty-two, forty-three of the main application. Therein, you provided the current and the projected pair mix for ICU telemetry. It does not include twenty, the data for 2022. Are you able to correct and update this table? Also, we are interested in how I know.
Let's just, let's just, let's just take that one case at a time. So.
So, yes, I believe we can get the 2022 updated pair mix data.
Thank you. In addition, we are interested in seeing how this compares to the hospitals over overall pair mix. Are you able to provide a similar table for overall hospital pair mix?
I'm sorry. Again, I'm having trouble hearing that question. I don't know if it's our mic or your mic, but if it's possible, if you could just get a little closer or increase your volume, and then just if we could hear the question again.
Sure. We are interested in seeing how this compares to the hospitals' overall pair mix. Are you able to provide a similar table for overall hospital pair mix?
Yes, we can provide that.
Thank you. And and page, page twelve, you stated that in part, higher equity patients will be examined, triaged, and maybe transferred to facilities with more onsite, more onsite capabilities for treatment of high acuity conditions.
I'm sorry. Again, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark. I apologize for continuing to interrupt you. I'm just trying to make sure we get to the page reference you gave.
Page forty-three, sir.
Thank you.
I think what might be helpful, Mr. Clark, is going forward, if you are going to reference a Bates page or a page number, you you give them a moment to open up their documents to where you're going to be asking them questions.
Yes, certainly. So the previous question was in relation to page, the information presented on page twelve. Excuse me, page twelve of the main application.
That's Bates number twelve.
It was reference to that language generally there, just the general narrative language.
Who is that talking?
I'm sorry. This is Ted Tucci. I was just
Thank you.
pointing my, the witnesses to the reference and on the Bates page of the executive summary. I'm I apologize, Mr. Clark. You you can complete your question.
If this proposal proposal were to be approved and ICU patients transferred to other NuVance facilities, what would be the potential financial impact on consumers?
So I can answer that question. We don't anticipate any financial impact to our consumers, our patients, and our community members. And that is because we intend to maintain the critical care services that we provide today in the new progressive care unit. And as we explained in more detail last week, we don't anticipate an increased number of transfers out of our hospital because the same services that we provide today will be provided in the progressive care unit.
So can I? I wanted clarification on that point because in the application, it says you're anticipating retaining ninety percent of your critical care patient admission volume. And the remaining ten percent would be transferred out. So you're not saying there will be an increase in transfers. You're saying something different than that?
Right, yes. And Dr. Marshall can explain how we got to that number.
Sure. So when we initially began the process of considering how to relocate this unit, we started off with a, an idea that certain cases that we were caring for at the time may not be appropriate to keep in the hospital. As we met with the most important stakeholders, including the nursing staff, emergency medicine, hospital medicine, and and members of the community, community medical staff, and members of the NuVance medical staff, we determined that we would be able to continue to provide the same level of care that we were providing previously in our unit on the first floor, which has been called the intensive care unit, as we will on the second floor in the new mixed acuity progressive care unit. We hadn't been keeping patients for many years that require high-level critical care intensive care unit services. So after several meetings and several permutations, we decided that the most appropriate way to proceed was to continue providing the same level of care, just in a different location.
So I just have a quick, I have a quick follow-up question for that then. Um, so you're saying that you haven't been taking patients currently that are in need of intensive care services?
And you've already gone. Actually, I think that's, I think that's a misunderstanding. Dr. Marshall, can you explain the difference?
Absolutely. So, you know, there's a difference between critical care medicine and intensive care unit medicine, perhaps, or an intensive care unit as a facility or a unit. So patients that require a higher level of critical care than we're able to provide at Sharon Hospital based upon technology, subspecialty care, procedures available, those patients who require that level of care have been and will continue to be transferred to the most appropriate facility based upon their needs and in collaboration with the patient and their family where best for them to go. Patients that require critical care that are appropriate to stay at Sharon Hospital in the new progressive care unit, which is similar to the care that we've been providing previously, will continue to stay at Sharon Hospital.
Is it safe to say then that Sharon Hospital has never had an I C, a legit ICU then?
Well, I think that decades in the past, when levels of care and technologies were different, Sharon Hospital had a unit that was termed ICU. That was a, a mid-level ICU at the time. We provided the same sorts of care that we provide today, only that was considered an acceptable utilization of an intensive care unit. As medicine has evolved and as technology has evolved, the patients that are the sickest patients are most appropriate under the care of specialists in intensive care unit medicine at facilities that can provide to them the the subspecialty care that they need. So at one point, you know, we might have been considered a mid-level intensive care unit. But now the the type of medicine that we practice in that unit is really progressive care medicine. You know, a high-level progressive care medicine, an excellent quality, but not intensive care unit medicine.
Dr. Marshall, this is Ted Tucci. Can you just give OHS staff a quick example or explanation of the difference between what critical, how critical care is delivered at a rural hospital like Sharon Hospital versus what critical care or ICU care is in a bigger hospital like Danbury?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So let's use as an example, patients who have respiratory failure and require mechanical ventilation. So they need to, you know, to be on a ventilator. So a patient who requires respiratory support on a ventilator, perhaps because they have pneumonia and they're unable to maintain their their breathing and their oxygenation, may be put on a ventilator. That patient may require IV antibiotics and fluids and other treatments to to keep them stable as they improve and as they are then able to be weaned off the ventilator. That's a patient that we care for now. If that same patient was in shock from an infection, septic shock perhaps, and developed multi-organ system failure requiring dialysis for kidney failure or neurologic interventions.
Can you explain what you mean by multi-organ system failure?
Absolutely. So when a patient is in respiratory failure, it needs, it means they need support for their breathing. All of the organs are potential targets of disease and of failure, the liver, the kidneys, the heart, the brain, et cetera. When patients require what we would describe as multi-level physiologic support, multiple organ support, or even ventilator management.
Meaning they can't function on their own. Their organs can't function without assistance.
Without assistance, exactly. And even patients that are on a ventilator but require a level of ventilator management that is above the training of a non-critical care intensive care unit physician, those patients need to be transferred to an intensive care unit. There are modalities within ventilator management. So you have a ventilator, but there are different modalities that are utilized in ventilator management, different techniques, if you will. And some are within the realm of an internist hospitalist practicing in a PCU, and some are not.
So why is the unit that we currently call an ICU at Sharon Hospital not capable of or able to provide care to the kind of patient you just described?
Well, we don't have the support services for organ failure, particularly kidney failure, you know. We don't have support for patients with advanced congestive heart failure secondary to these diseases. And we also don't have critical care board-certified physicians in-house that can manage these patients with complex multi-organ system disease or even complex respiratory failure requiring special management of their ventilator that we cannot do.
So if their heart couldn't function on its own or their kidneys were not able to function in the way that they were supposed to, there's a potential that patient could die if they remained at Sharon Hospital because you don't have the equipment you need to provide them that assistance. Is that a true statement?
Absolutely. And I'd add to that, that a single organ that's affected may be something that we can handle if we have that capability. We don't do dialysis, but we can manage patients with congestive heart failure. But when they have multiple organ systems that are involved, they require a higher level of care.
Meaning going to a bigger hospital that has all that equipment, all those services, and the specialist doctors in the, in those areas?
Absolutely. And that's what we all want for our patients.
Thank you. That was tremendously helpful. So just going back to Mr. Clark's question, though, about the potential financial impact on consumers. Is it fair to say then that since you're not anticipating an increased number of transfers, that there will be no increase in negative financial impact on consumers then?
I would agree with that statement.
Yes.
So retaining or admitting that the same patients as you had been before, that itself would also not increase costs for consumers?
I don't anticipate any change in the cost to consumers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. How many transfers were made to area service providers in the last five years? And this you may provide as a late file as well?
I, excuse me, I didn't, I didn't hear that. Could you repeat the question?
How many transfers were made to area service providers in the last five years? And this may be submitted, submitted as a late file.
So, Mr. Mr. Clark, we do have some data on that in our materials. If you could just give us a moment, we can point you to where it is. It may need to be updated, but we do have data.
Yeah, we did submit that in our application. But if you require, if it's not up to date, we can provide more. It's on average about four hundred patients a year.
That, I'm, I'm sorry, but we, please provide it in terms of per week, per month, per year, and that might be submitted as a late file.
Okay, so.
I don't know if we need that level of specificity.
Is the, is the question, do you suspect there's some seasonality or weekly fluctuation? But annually, it's it's about four hundred, as Christina said, and monthly, it varies from thirty-five to forty. And that's pretty constant over the past five years.
So I'm just going to direct the witness to S H zero zero one five six. Can you just briefly summarize what's shown in that table?
So we provided data on our transfers broken down by service line from the years 2019 through 2022, that was current through July. And you can see an average of about four hundred transfers per year, but it does fluctuate between three hundred and here it goes up to four hundred and forty-eight in the year two, two thousand and nineteen.
And where was that in your submissions? I'm sorry, I missed that.
This is on page one fifty-six, and there's a table. This is transfer volume from our emergency department.
Okay.
And reference of.
I'm sorry, just for completeness, I'll also hand the witness S H one five two. Can you just describe the information that's shown in that chart?
Yeah, so on page one five two, we have the transfer data. You'll see the same totals, number of transfers per year with the same time period, yet this table is displaying the hospitals that our patients were transferred to.
Thank you.
I think if you could just update that, that that would be helpful.
Just to to clarify, update it per year, or would you still like that broken down per week, per month, per year?
Steve, what what do you think would be most beneficial to you guys?
I think per month, per year would be fine.
Okay.
And this is Steve Lazarus. I just had a quick follow-up question. So you were talking about the difference between the ICU and the PCU and sort of services you were, you've been providing. And that was very helpful. I agree with Attorney Chuka. That was good to get on the record and have it on file. When, 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 in fact, was the last ICU service that was provided by the hospital? And, you know, well, let's start with that. When was the last ICU patient that was seen at Sharon Hospital that received the ICU level of services?
Mr. Mr. Lazarus, I'm sorry. I just want to get clarification on the question. Because they're, they're, just so that the record is absolutely clear, the hospital maintains and continues to operate on the first floor, a unit that provides critical care services to patients. So there are patients in the hospital today who are, who are receiving critical care services. So I'm not sure if you're asking a different question, but certainly the witnesses can testify.
I'm going back to the level of service you were talking about, the critical care. You were saying you don't provide the intensive care level. So that's what I'm trying to understand is when, how, when was the last time that service was provided at that level, at the intensive care level?
This is Dr. Murphy. I would, I would offer a perspective, Mr. Lazarus, that it's a moving target. Because if, if you recognize that, you know, a number of years ago, when a patient had a heart attack and the the treatment for that heart attack would be rendered in an ICU, but the treatment consisted of bedrest and an aspirin. I just finished a book on Eisenhower. I was amazed that that's exactly what he got for, for a month. He was, you know, laid in bed. That could have been rendered and probably was rendered in the Sharon Hospital in the setting of what was then known as an ICU. But once the treatment of a heart attack required a coronary stent or some sort of percutaneous intervention, then all of a sudden, it really didn't meet the same standard. And because Sharon Hospital doesn't do cardiac catheterizations or or stent placement, all of a sudden now that patient would have to be transferred to a facility that could offer contemporary state-of-the-art care. So that varies depending upon the the clinical event that brings the patient to the hospital and what is and isn't available at Sharon. So I would just offer the perspective that it's it's difficult to be precise, but at least that's my contribution. Mark, you may want to add something else. Or Christina?
Sure, sure. I would say that exactly as you described, what defines that level of care has evolved. And we have and continue to provide critical care services to those patients. And what defines, you know, the the level of intensive care is really based upon resources that are available at a particular facility. And so we provide critical care at a particular level. And when patients require a higher level of care based upon their their needs, their clinical needs, then they will be transferred to a higher-level intensive care unit.
Thank you. So, I mean, I guess, you know, I guess you're here for the termination of the intensive care unit within this unit that provides all, provides all levels of care. That's how I was trying to understand, you know, the the differences that you were talking between the two. So that's how I was trying to understand, you know, the the differences that you were talking between the two. For example, when was the last time the ICU level of service was needed or provided by the hospital?
Well, I can say the the last time that that level was needed was, you know, recently, when patients that we've had required transfer to an intensive care unit. The level of critical care that we provide in that unit will continue when we locate that unit on the second floor. Um, the historic uh naming of that unit as intensive care unit, it was always a mixed acuity unit, which means it always had patients that were critical care patients and patients who just required a heart monitor. In the interval, we have begun to monitor patients on our medical surgical unit. So the patients that just require a heart monitor are being monitored now on our medical surgical unit. The critical care patients that have remained in our first-floor unit that has been named intensive care unit, those critical care patients will be continued to be cared for in the progressive care unit on the second floor. Now, I think I I'm understanding your question because there's an issue of a termination. So part of this maybe can be explained by what was considered an ICU level of care in the past versus the present. So in the past, years ago, simply being on a ventilator was appropriate for an intensive care unit. Things have evolved, things have changed, and with much more rapidity since COVID. Because COVID showed us that ICUs became full and overflowed, and we had to start caring for patients with respiratory failure outside of the intensive care unit. And so this is a a continuation of that evolution in that we will continue to care for those critical care patients with the caveat that those patients that require care that we cannot provide, which has been basically the case for years, will be transferred to an intensive care unit.
All right, thank you. And as far as the transfers, that number, some of the numbers that we're going to be submitting as late file, majority of those patients, would 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 those be considered the critical care patients that were not, were not being able, you were not able to address their needs at the hospital due to technology or whatever services that were available?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lazarus. Can I just have that question again? I didn't hear it.
Sure. So the patient that we've talked about, then providing the numbers, updating the numbers of the transfers to the other facilities, I'm assuming those patients, they were transferred, were probably transferred because that level of care could not be provided with the technology that you have said was not available at Sharon Hospital.
So I think that the, the, the answer to that is some of them. But these, these transfer statistics include all transfers. And that will include pediatric patients that we do not admit to Sharon Hospital. We never, well, we had twenty or thirty years ago, but not recently. Um, or patients who require um psychiatric care that are not appropriate for our geriatric psychiatry unit, uh, or patients who require surgical care for surgical specialties that we do not have at Sharon Hospital. So it's all of those patients, not just critical care patients.
So ju- just for the sake of clarity, uh, Dr. Marshall, when the this, the the, the data that we looked at regarding Sharon Hospital's average transfer experience, just so that it's clear on the record, that data reflects the the entirety of the experience of Sharon Hospital, and it should not be interpreted as being uh data that re- reflects transfer of patients um who may require ICU or critical care services. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, are you, I I don't know if these exist, but are there scholarly articles or or journals that you can provide copies of that would help us to make sense of that distinction that you're you're discussing? I I do recall seeing articles about, you know, what is a PCU, like what are the services available in a PCU? But, you know, something that can, that can speak more to the distinction between the two, I think would be helpful.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
I think we
We, I think, yeah, I think we did submit some, but we can take a look at what we submitted and
Yeah, um, absolutely.
I I also think it might be helpful. I just want to draw your attention to um our application where we provided us um average case mix index of our patients. And it and it's important to look at that data because the case mix index tells you how sick our patients are, what their acuity level is. What we provided in our application was an average case mix index of the patients that are in our ICU. And we also compared it to the case mix index of patients in other ICUs. We also compare that to patients in other PCUs so that you could see that the acuity level of our patients is equivalent to patients in other PCUs and even some med-surg units, but it is not equivalent to patients in other ICUs.
Can you explain what conclusion you draw from that data? Why is that distinction that you're explaining important in terms of helping OHS understand what currently goes on at Sharon Hospital with respect to the delivery of critical care medicine?
Right. It goes back to your previous question and and further explains the difference between our current ICU and ICU services that are provided at other hospitals. So while we do can um provide critical care services, they are not the same level of critical care services that are provided in in other ICUs that have those additional resources.
And and how is that reflected in the patients that show up in your case mix index? What does that data tell you?
Uh, the the patients that we're able to care for at Sharon Hospital are PCU progressive care level of care patients.
Okay.
A lower level of acuity.
Me- meaning that their conditions are not as serious? That's what acuity means?
Yes.
Yes.
Or or that, or they may be more stable? Is that another way to describe a potential to the 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 patient you talk about?
Yes.
They're still critically ill, but but they're not in immediate jeopardy or danger in terms of their stability? Is that a fair statement? Or or just
Sure. So um they, they're critically ill, which by definition means that they're, they're certainly in jeopardy of uh progressive illness or worsening illness, uh, but not at the the level of uh what would be uh acceptable in a intensive care unit.
But I I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure this is clear on the record. In terms of what your case mix index shows, in terms of the patients that you historically treat in what you call an ICU, how does that compare with, say, for example, what is called an ICU in a seven-hundred-bed hospital like Danbury?
Right, less sick.
So in other words, if you, you have a patient at Sharon Hospital who is located physically in your ICU space, if that patient went to Danbury, wh- where, where do you think they'd likely end up being treated?
In a step-down unit or potentially a med-surg unit um or a PCU-type unit.
To say it colloquially, their condition isn't bad enough, or they're not sick enough.
Right, right.
That that it makes sense for them to actually be in the highest intensity unit in the hospital.
Correct.
That hospital.
Correct.
So I, given some of this testimony, I I I would like to give the 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 analysts a little time to go through their questions and just see if if these can be whittled down even further. Um, that way we're not asking questions that don't need to be asked anymore. Um, so I'm going to take a ten-minute break. Uh, we'll come back at one fifty-one. Um, and we will proceed at that point. Just a reminder to everyone, you should probably turn your camera and your audio off.